All right Danielle. We're gonna start.
All right, everybody.
Everybody, we're gonna start the meeting tonight. Please, if everybody could quiet down, we're gonna start the meeting. Thank you, and I appreciate your patience. Danielle?
The meeting tonight is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda public comments. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, tonight we have a public hearing, Local Law of the Town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York, amending Chapter 155 zoning, Article IX, Action 155-41.1 of the Marlborough Town Code entitled Ridge Line and Sleep Slope Protection, April 22nd, 2024, at seven o'clock here. Before we get to that, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the men and women who sacrificed their lives to give us the opportunity to serve our country and our town. Thank you. Okay, here we are again. I'm glad to see more people back out there. So this is the public hearing on the zone change for 155 again. Um, should I bring it up here? So this is the code amended. I'm just gonna read it quickly. Section 1, Section 155-41.1 F4 of the Town Code amended to read as follows, deletions are stricken, additions are underscored. So four applicants for construction of properties in which these sections apply shall demonstrate to the town engineer and the town code enforcement officer that no proposed building or structure inclusive of chimneys, vents, or other fixtures attached to the structure that is subject to this section shall extend above the highest elevation of the Marlborough ridgeline as viewed from the east as determined by the town engineer and the town code enforcement officer. And then we have the stricken sections. A, we didn't change. B was partially stricken, and then it says there shall be no disturbance of the tree line above the highest point of the structure and the highest point of the ridgeline. And C, applicants are required to provide the building department with topographic survey?
Topographic.
Topographic. I had that rehearsed earlier today, too. Topographic survey of the lot showing topographic within the 200 feet. And the proposed building areas are shown elevation with two feet intervals, which is quite a bit of a, um, of an elevation drop, two feet intervals, there's gonna be many, many lines on the ridgeline. So, uh, topography shall be used by NAVDA-8, and that'll be defined below. D, structures shall not use or contain bright or fluorescent colored materials or highly reflective shiny metal or similar materials. All structures shall be of the natural coloring blending with the ridgeline, natural color scheme, use of colors such as brown, black, gray, beige, or green are preferred. E, lighting shall be excessive, shall not be excessive. Bright LED lighting shall not be used. Only fully shielded natural lighting and fixtures must be used. Lighting shall be dark sky compliant. F, definitions. One, a ridgeline is defined as the highest elevation of land running north and south across the Marlborough ridgeline protection map. Two, tree line is defined as the edge of the habitat at which trees and vegetation are capable of growing above the ridgeline. And three, NAVDA-8 is defined as a North American vertical datum of 1988. And section three is the same. So that are the, those were the changes that we now proposed after about four months of going back and forth and taking a lot of public comments. And I have the floor for open discussion for three minutes. Anybody wanna come up for a public comment? Mary Beth, come on up. Good evening.
My name's Mary Beth King, and I am speaking on behalf of the Conservation Advisory Committee. Nikki Simonovsky, our chair, wasn't able to be here tonight, so she asked me to deliver this message. So, can you hear me? Okay. The Conservation Advisory Committee is grateful for the additional changes being proposed for this code. It is very gratifying so many made their voices heard and that the town board incorporated multiple suggestions and comments, including those of the CAC into this new wording. It is noteworthy and commendable that additional definitions are included. These help further define the intention of the code. While we did not have ample opportunity to discuss wording for the updated code, we are very appreciative of the inclusion of guidelines for controlling light pollution as well as architectural attention to color of any intended structure. On the whole, this proposed wording appears to satisfy the public's many questions and comments. However, there are two concerns. Code 151-41.1 F4 presently reads in part, quote, "Applicants for construction on properties to which this section applies shall demonstrate to the reviewing board or town engineer, as the case may be, that the proposed buildings or structures will not extend above the predominant tree line," end quote. In addition, in Section 151-41.1 F1 of the original code, the planning board or the zoning board of appeals is specifically assigned to review all applications pertaining to the ridgeline and steep slope protection. In the proposed new wording, the town code enforcement officer is specifically included as a responsible party along with the town engineer. This is a change and seems appropriate as their roles are to ensure the code is explained and enforced. And including their roles in the proposed amendment mirrors other areas in Code 151-41.1 and Code 155-2. In contrast to the proposed amendment, the reviewing board is eliminated. To be consistent, shouldn't the reviewing board mean the planning board or the zoning board of appeals? Is my timer up?
Your timer is up, Mary Beth.
Okay, that was a quick three minutes.
Three minutes.
Okay. Uh, so I guess there is, we're just wondering, why, is there a specific reason for removing the reviewing board, that wording? And if I may, on a second note, absent any notation of the required distance from the top of the ridgeline, which is accomplished by removing the 50-foot, uh, the 50-foot wording, there should also be some numerical or objective method that puts what is allowable on the record so that the applicant is certain the project is compliant with the code.
Thank you. Appreciate, we appreciate the CAC's work on all this, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't see the timer up there.
See, I got it specifically for tonight. Anybody else? I have it.
Can I give this to you?
Come on up. Yep, Cindy, come on up, Cindy.
I live in Marlborough, and I wanna make it clear that I'm here as a private citizen to express my views.
Yes.
And I just wanna, first of all, I wanna thank you all for putting some very good wording into this, especially some of these protective, um, suggestions, and also the, also the, the light.
Cindy, is that volume on? There you go, there.
There we go. Anyway, I wanna, I wanna thank you for being responsive to a lot of the comments that came up. The one thing that I am concerned about is that we have taken, we still have taken out any kind of vertical setback. And I know there was discussions that perhaps we could trim it down from the 50 feet to 40 feet, but I know when Pat Hines spoke here and explained how they had developed the original code, they had looked at a lot of other communities and, um, that had been concerned about protection of ridge lines, and they, they all used vertical setbacks. So, part of the problem originally was we were talking about the ambiguities and the fact that it was a little difficult for the engineer and the building inspector to be able to understand exactly what the code was asking of them. This code is still rather ambiguous, and when they talk about that the town code enforcement officer and the engineer will be looking at how a particular house looks from any point east along the north-south run, running of the ridgeline, that still is very subjective because it's like where on the eastern side are you gonna be? Are you gonna be the northeast from the property, the southeast, directly east? It still leaves for a lot of ambiguity. So, um, I personally still think that we should put in some kind of a vertical setback, number-wise, and again, I think 40 to 50 feet would be appropriate. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? I got a, I got a letter from, uh, Sinah Hudson I'll read today. This was from Sinah Hudson, and I'm gonna read it out here. Ridge line protection law amendment. Dear Supervisor, Corcoran members of the town board, Sinah Hudson commends the town board for responding to public comments on the original proposal to amend the Town of Marlborough ridgeline steep slope protection law. We write today a response to the latest proposed amendment as announced on the April 8th town board meeting. We offer the suggestions below in the spirit of assisting the town desire to protect the ridgeline and steep slopes in the manner that applicants will find clear and flexible. While the updated proposal would introduce important protections regulating lighting and the use of reflective materials on the ridge, it would still eliminate the current buffer zone between the crest and the ridgeline and the highest point of any new construction. Remain strongly in favor of including a numerical elevation buffer, both to ensure appropriate protectiveness and creative and clearly understood standard in approving new construction. The current law provides that no structure shall, shall be located closer than, the current law? Okay, yeah, the current law shall, no closer than 50 feet in elevation of the ridgeline. In addition, the law prohibits any disturbance within the 50-foot buffer zone except in cases where necessary access driveways cannot reasonably be located outside the area. This provision is comparable to similar elevation buffers imposed by other municipalities in the region to conserve sensitive ridgeline areas included Amenia and Duchess County, Hillsdale, and Columbia County. The proposed amendment would eliminate the 50-foot buffer zone entirely. Instead, the amended law would only require at the highest point of the construction not extend above the highest elevation of the ridgeline as viewed from the east and determined from the town engineer and the town code enforcement officer. Without a clearly defined buffer zone, the amended law would attempt to prohibit disturbance of the tree line area at the highest points of the structure and the highest point of the ridgeline, uh, which actually I wrote back to them and said, there is a section there that says you cannot disturb the highest point between the highest point of the structure and the highest point of the ridgeline. So, we did add that wording. We understand the concerns have been raised regarding ambiguous language in the current law that interferes with effective enforcement. However, it appears that the amended law would be equally, if not more, vulnerable to inconsistent interpretation. Whether or not the building of certain heights would appear and extend above the ridgeline will be impacted by the observer location. Their view and angle, the current cover of the condition is subject to variations. Moreover, leaving the town engineer and code enforcement officer without a consistent numerical standard to apply is likely to raise additional concerns that the law will be enforced inconsistently with risk creating confusion for property owners regarding what projects will be ruled acceptable. If it's likewise unclear how the tree line's area mentioned in the amended Section 155-41.1 F4B will be measured consistently, for example, it will likely be difficult for landowners attempting to measure from the tops of the structure to their property to determine whether effectiveness will have an impact on the tree line as seen from more distant viewpoints. With it clear is that the proposed change would open significantly more of the Marlborough ridgeline to development, a structure with a low enough height would conceivably build almost on top of the ridge so long as the highest point remained below the crest. Exactly. Removing the specific numerical ridgeline currently imposed by the law would risk creating further uncertainty in enforcement and remove key protections for the sensitive areas. The current reform affects a strong intent to protect the Marlborough ridgeline and steep slope for the satisfy the welfare of the citizens of the town. While the current proposal additional construction standards reflect the town board ongoing commitment to addressing public input, we still strongly believe that the modification or clarifying the existing elevation buffer will most effectively ensure the law will ambiguously and protective of the Marlborough natural area. We hope the town board considers these comments and takes steps to provide additional protection and clarify prior to making determination. Respectfully, Jonathan Clark, escrow attorney from Sinah Hudson. And that was the only other one I had in the email today. So I have that, I sent that to the clerk's office, that'll go in the record also. Does anybody else have any other public comments as of tonight? If not, I'm gonna take a motion to close the public hearing.
I make the motion to close the public hearing.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna, I don't know if everybody wants to stay or not, but they can leave, but I'm gonna go on to the next part of our meeting, which is our workshop meeting for the town board of Town of Marlborough, 21 Milton Turnpike, April 22nd. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2024 town board meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2024 town board meeting.
I need a second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Motion to approve minutes from the April 8th, 2024 public hearing.
I will also make the motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2024 public hearing.
Need a second.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Authorized payment of bills of $980,857.40. And just so you know, I know you guys looked at this, but a big part of that is the water, um, bill that we pay this time of the year, this is for the debt services. So the water bill alone is with debt services $582,499. So that takes a big chunk of it. So if anybody out there is wondering why it's so big, that's part of it, and other parts of it are the Milton Landing project, there's a big invoice in for that, and some of the Tomback stuff is, uh, community centers finishing off. So, I need a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion to authorize the payment of the bills of $980,000 plus.
I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, supervisor updates, uh, basically, uh, there's a bunch of projects going on in town if everybody hasn't seen. Obviously, the Milton Landing, we're probably about 75% in right now. Uh, they're planning on paving next week. Uh, there's a few work order changes that I'm fighting them on, a couple of them I don't think we should be paying for, so that's kinda holding some of the stuff up because I don't agree with their billing. Um, so we're working with them and we're working with our engineers to get that satisfied. But I'm hoping, uh, by the end of the month, that was my goal, is to have that all paved and ready to go by the end of the month. Uh, it might push into the first week of the next month, but, uh, we're on track for that, so then we could start renting the facility again. I had a very, very good meeting with CSX finally, down at the landing last week, uh, three and a half hour meeting. Uh, this was a pre-construction meeting with their engineers and their attorneys, and it went very, very well. They agreed to where the landing crossing's gonna go, they agreed to the construction we were doing. Uh, we had a safety class that lasted over an hour, uh, so we're well informed on all CSX safety procedures. Um, there's a lot of them, and, uh, we have to pay for all the flag people that come there, the engineer people that come there. Uh, we had to set up an escrow account of $42,000 with, um, CSX to pay for all this. Um, if we don't use that, we get our money back, obviously, but it's a lot of money. Um, we, you know, we're gonna go to phase two down there, which is the crossing, so now DOT will get involved. This may still take another year to get the crossing approved and signed off. I have two more agreements to sign with CSX, and that's the easement agreement and the maintenance agreement. Uh, we're agreeable on everything except they want us to pay again a yearly charge to use the crossing, uh, and for the actual use of the land this time. So they're saying we're gonna ask for a 40-foot easement across their property, they want us to pay like a rent to use their property. I don't agree with that, so we've been back and forth, so now we're at the point where we, we offered them a fair settlement for the property, which is we take what the value of an acre is, we, there's a calculation that goes into that, and it's roughly around $3,900. So it's not a lot of money. They seem to be, uh, open to that, and right now it's in their attorney's hands, and if they agree to that, then we could sign that last agreement with, um, the easement agreement, and then we should be good to go with DOT. Um, so again, a lot of projects have been going on down there, um, and our guys also have done some work down there with them to help with some of the costs for later on with some additional parking that we may need to do. We put some extra catch base and drainage in ourselves to save some money, so I wanna thank the highway guys for that. On the community center, the interior is all done except for the women's bathroom, we're just waiting on some stall, um, barriers that have to go up. Besides that, everything inside is completed. Uh, the exterior right now, the only thing left is the exterior stairs and walkway, and that is being done this week. And we just got called today, the blacktop should be coming May 5th or May 6th, I forget, so, very soon. So after that happens, uh, as long as we can get the landscaping completed, uh, we should definitely be on our track to open by June 1st. So, uh, it looks very good. Uh, we had our training class up there also, myself, Jerry, Gary, we had a, uh, a quick review of all the audio visual and how things work up there, so, uh, now we're pretty comfortable how everything works. But everything's going good there. Uh, at the parks, I know if you guys saw Willow Tree Road, I've asked the guys to clear out that park corner of the property at Willow Tree, uh, and utilize any dirt that we get from side of the road or from someone not needing a spot to put dirt, that's, uh, obviously clean fill, because the long-term goal of, uh, the board is to actually fix that area up and visually see the waterfall that's there, and you notice you can see the waterfall now, some of the trees were cut down, but that area's gonna get cleaned up, and Dave has volunteered to do some of that work eventually. But that's a long-term goal, but within the park, we have a project going on with the Bocci League, the Bocci League needed an extra court. Uh, we found a spot for them up on the hill a little, and Dave's been working up there for the past two weeks to help them out. Uh, we found a treasure trove of boulder rocks, right Dave? Up on the top part of the hill of the park, and Dave's been using those to landscape around there. Uh, gonna put some sonotubes in for future additional pavilion that the Bocci League is gonna pay for, and they're gonna be building the Bocci Court. Um, so that's going on there. Uh, what else we got going on? I also had my supervisors meeting this past month. A bunch of supervisors are actually leaving office early, which is kinda shocking to me, um, but, uh, they are leaving, and there's, uh, the consolidated court system, we had another big talk about that. Uh, Town of Ulster has not signed on to that consolidated court, um, agreement yet, and that's kinda holding that up. The court system up in the county has been built, um, but has not been utilized yet, and that's for arraignments. I don't know if everybody knows, but most towns have problems with arraignments at night or even during the day, getting judges, and everybody has to have an attorney present when they're, um, in front of a judge, and that wasn't being done for quite a bit of the time. So the New York State mandated now that that has to be done. So at the county level now, they will have a consolidated court system, which means you will have representation, and you will have a court date, and you will have a judge in front of you, uh, which means we have to bring people up to the county, but they will bring them back. But it's, it's a system that's been placed in many other counties, and I think it will work. We have to get Ulster to sign on because Ulster is one of the major contributors to that system, and I assume that will get done. We also did, uh, receive the paperwork, and I signed the paperwork for the $100,000 grant for the lighting for the parks. So we did, I did reach out to GPI, and they are gonna be bidding out the lighting for Young's Field and the town park. We're gonna see how those come in. We're gonna bid it as A and B, and depending on how expensive they are, we may only do one field, and we may not do the other field. But it's $100,000, we're a 50% match, and we can do 25% in kind, so, um, and the Marlborough Youth Baseball's been working with us on this, and, uh, I know they're gonna donate some money, they already said, um, they already donated money towards the lighting, uh, that we bought with the highway department, uh, because they use them sometimes at the field, so they've been a good partner with the town. Uh, a lot of work that was done down at Young's Field, too, I don't know if everybody knows, don't, Young's Field was donated to the town. Uh, we extended the parking lot. I had gotten 300 tons of stone donated by Tilcon, which was delivered two weeks ago, and the guys spread that all out, and I could tell you, I went down there this weekend, there wasn't a spot left in that parking lot, so thank God we expanded the parking lot. So that alleviates some of the people parking on the road, on Young's Road, which is a good thing, but, uh, a lot to do at Young's Field, a lot to do at the parks, and we're keeping up with it as best we can, so. Also, I met with DOT and I met with CSX down at the Falcon, uh, one week after the following week. DOT at the Falcon Crossing where we had the fatalities, basically in other words, said they can't do pretty much anything, which I kinda expected, but I was hoping, because we did have two fatalities, that they would maybe do something, because I asked for a crosswalk, they said no because it's in a down area of 9W. Uh, I asked for, uh, the blinky lights that say people are crossing, they said no because again, it's in a down spout. Uh, I asked for a traffic light, they laughed at me. So really, we didn't get much out of DOT, I did remind them that, uh, the Doc Side project is possibly gonna be moving forward through the planning board in the next month or so, starting hopefully, and that this intersection is beginning to come an issue, and they said as that happens, they'll start to deal with it more. I did then follow up with a, um, a meeting with CSX. See, and for some reason, I don't know if you noticed, when you go through those sections, it's very, um, dull lighting there, it's not lightly bright there, for some reason, I don't know why. But anyways, uh, they agreed to increase those two lights that are on the poles already to a higher light voltage, and they also agreed to put another light on Doc Road on the eastern side coming out to 9W, so that'll also light up Doc Road on the corner. So at the very least, we're gonna have a lot more light there, and I talked to Lee and Julian. Lee said that when people start to leave, he's gonna try to get someone with a vest on there and actually help people go across. Now that it's lit up, it might take about six to seven weeks for that to happen, um, but that's gonna move forward. I signed the papers for that, too, or, actually, I gotta ask you guys to sign the papers for that tonight, so.
Central Hudson, yeah, yeah. You were saying CSX.
Yeah, I gotta do that tonight. But that, I assume you're gonna say yes, but we're gonna move forward on that, hopefully. Never assume anything, you're right, Eddie. Uh, what else? You guys got any questions?
No.
I could go on all night, but we're, so, uh, that's kinda where we're at right now, but we're, uh, moving ahead on all four cylinders here, and, uh, we hope to keep it up, so, that's my report. I don't have any presentations tonight. Anybody have any comments on the agenda? Reports, uh, committees? So I did get the one from Meet Me in Marlborough. Here we go. Sheila actually got it to me on time, and I don't know if anybody went down to the Blossom Fest this weekend, but it was a, um- Fest this weekend, but it was a good time. We moved it down to Church Street because it was on Saturday this year, so we really couldn't close off Main Street because of businesses that were having people park there, and I want to thank the chief because I was away on my birthday in the city, and I was bugging this guy the whole day, and my wife wanted to kill me, but he got, he met down there, and he got it all straightened out for me, so thanks, chief. And they had a really good event, so.
Yeah, I was there. It was a nice event. When I was there in the afternoon, it seemed like a good crowd, a lot of people coming and spending the afternoon, it was a good time, definitely. Good, good community participation, and that's what we need more of.
Yep, it was really nice. So let me read a report. April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, Meet Me in Marlboro Town Board Report. We'd like to thank the Town of Marlboro, Marlboro Police, Town Park Management, Shamrock Shows, Amusements, and Locust Grove Fruit Farm, Mountain Dance Center, Robert Pollack, Quimby Farms, Emron Clean, Milton Fire Department for support in helping make Saturday, four-twenty Blossoms Street Fair a fun and safe event for everyone to enjoy. Meet Me in Marlboro is sponsored by a billboard to showcase our town's bounty in March and April located at the parking lot of Missoula Oil Services across from Stewart Shop in Milton. Please see the image below. Upcoming events, planning this year events, May five-nineteen, May, the farm and artisan market in Milton Hardware. October, HHV Farmers Market. Saturday, October the fifth, and Sunday, the sixth is the rain date is the bounty festival. Ten-twenty-six, two to four P.M., kids and adult trick-or-treat in the Hamlet of Marlboro. And Saturday, eleven-twenty-three, bi-local event, Thanksgiving Farmers Market. I will tell you, I had to have a conversation with the Meet Me in Marlboro on that event, unfortunately, right now, and I don't know why she still has it listed, but right now, as of right now, the school district, the tarps that they use in the school are no longer usable, and they do not, or they will not buy any new tarps, and they asked if Meet Me in Marlboro wants to continue using that facility, that they would have to buy the tarps. These tarps are not cheap. They're somewhere around the eight-thousand-dollar mark, and they do not have the money, and the town does not have it in the budget to do so, so that event may or may not happen, so.
What tarps are we talking about?
Tarps that go on the gym floor. They don't allow you to go in the gym with an event like that unless you have tarps on the floor, so it has to cover, and it has to be a certain thickness and a certain material. So this is at the Marlboro Elementary School.
Why have I never noticed a tarp? I go to that event every year.
This is October twenty-third. It's a really good event, so I hope that we could, you know, it's just in the gym area, but it's a perfect location just because of parking, the street light, and people getting on and in and out of there. It's a really good location. So we'll see if we could work with the school more, but as of right now, they won't let them use it.
There's a comment from the audience.
Hold on, this is the billboard that's going to go up, and this is going to be over there, and it's, I think it's one right next to where they put the donation box for the clothes, which has been working out pretty good. I know BJ's been going up there. I asked him yesterday, Saturday, he said he only had one time someone dumped something there so far, and he got it right away and brought it to the transfer station, so I said that's pretty good because I haven't seen anything, so, so that, you know, but they are getting a lot of donations.
He monitors it very well. Every day he's down there, he takes care of it, so that's good. He's a caretaker there.
I had a question, who had a question? Go ahead, Steve.
Did you able to use the town rep building?
I can't hear you.
Did they able to use the town rep?
They asked. The problem with that is parking and getting in and out of there, I really wouldn't because of the amount of people that they have come there. With traffic, it's a little difficult. That's why the Marlboro Elementary School is ideal because you have a traffic light that controls traffic. It's always been the problem with the community center, right? And it's still, like, I had DOT there also the day I had them there, and they said, yeah, we'll give you the bill with the permit. It'll be about two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred-thousand dollars to put a turning lane in, so, you know, this is where we are, so, you know, I'm talking to, you know, Senator Henchy and even Jilla Brand to see if we could get money for a turning lane, but, you know, that's a big knot of money, but that's the problem with that location, only is the egress, degress going in and out, and with that event, I don't know if you've been there, there's a lot of people that come in and out of there. I'd be a little nervous, and I wouldn't want to have a police officer standing in the middle of that road. You're at fifty-five miles an hour there. It's not like you're in the Hamlet of Marlboro where you could, you know, basically stand there like the crossing guard does, but it is, it's an option. It was one of the ones we talked about, so we're going to try to work with the school. We'll see. All right, that's the only reports from the departments I had, but do you have anything from recreation?
Nothing, nothing really new from the recreation committee. They met last month, well, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, not last month, and are just fine-tuning all of the details for the concerts in the park. Every concert, the headliner is solidified, and there's an opening band every week as well, so we're working on getting the signs repainted and the flyers ready so those can be officially published, but everything is basically locked in. There's also more than one food truck every week lined up, so there'll be a nice variety of food as well, and then, of course, we have the fireworks on the first Friday and the final Friday of the series, so that'll be two strong events to start and end that series, and then the team is already working on the Halloween trunk-or-treat as well, so busy, busy.
Trunk-or-treat?
Yes.
And we, and camp season is in full bloom. Tina's been going crazy with the ladies getting everything ready. The office is filling up with all the stuff that they need. Kurt has been helping out quite a bit with getting all the certifications done. We thought we were losing our camp nurse again, but she is coming back, which, thank God, because without that, we can't have camp. It's always the struggle every year. So that's starting, so the flyers are out on our Facebook page and our, I believe we got it on our website. If not, we could get it on there, too, so. That's it. Yeah, I got to do that, right? Should I do that now? Let's go. You got one?
Yeah.
Come on up, yes. Yeah, CAC report?
Yeah.
Come on up. Where is that here?
And it's about thirty seconds.
All right. I got to time you again.
All right. So this is the Conservation Advisory Committee report to the town board. It was a quiet month for the CAC. We continue our efforts to complete the community greenhouse gas inventory and look forward to presenting the can and bottle collection receptacles to the town within the next few weeks. Chief Kokosa is following up with school officials for the proper placement of the receptacles. That's it. Our next meeting is Thursday, May ninth. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody have any new business?
Oh, I have another. Any update on pickleball?
Oh, boy. You weren't here last meeting, were you?
No.
Well, bad news, right, Manny? Right now, the pickleball court's on hold, only because we just got the estimate just for blacktop.
Oh, I do remember that.
Fifty-four thousand dollars, you remember? So right now, that's on hold until we can either find an alternate location where we don't have to move the basketball court, because that's a big part of it. We'll see, we're looking. I like to have it, and we'd like to have it in Cluett Chance, it's just a matter of finding a spot, because right now, the big, not all of it, but half of that price is because you're taking out the basketball court, moving the basketball court, moving, then we'd have to do fencing. It's, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot. So we probably could get that blacktop number down quite a bit, which, where we would be in our budget, which we have budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars for blacktop and stuff like that, but, you know, when we got the bill for fifty-four, it was like, okay, this is more than, this double our budget, so, and that didn't even include the fencing yet, and that didn't include the striping, so, but if we could find an alternate location, we could at least get the blacktop stuff done this year, then we could rebudget the, you know, the fencing for next year. So we're still looking, but that's where we're at with that, so. Manny wasn't happy about it.
No, I'm not.
Your sister's not happy. I did have something that we have to add to the agenda, so I do need to make a motion. I apologize because they just gave it to us last minute, and I do want to get this done tonight. The Highway Department, we did agree in terms to our extension on our contract agreement, and I want to add the negotiated contract agreement to be signed by myself and Eddie as the negotiating team, and I just need a motion to add that to the agenda as a resolution to be able to sign the highway agreement for their extension of their contract. So can I get a motion to update the resolution?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for Scott to sign the negotiated agreement for the Highway Department for their contract.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I apologize, I should have done that earlier, but that's why Sherri assists to my right, she reminds me of these things, so, but, okay. Open board discussion, you guys got anything else you want to discuss? I know we talked a lot in the last few meetings about the ridgeline, I think for four months we've been talking about the ridgeline quite a bit. Do you have anything else you want to talk about tonight to the open meeting?
Well, I have one comment, and my comment is that whatever happened to the, to the ladder truck, fire truck that there was some discussion.
Ladder truck, fire truck?
Yeah.
Yeah, the.
The lack thereof.
The lack thereof. So a few meetings with the fire chiefs, you know, personally, the Town of Marlboro cannot go buy ladder trucks, the Town of Marlboro cannot solicit anybody to buy a fire truck. We cannot collect fees to buy a fire truck. The Fire Department, they're their own districts, they have to do that labor. I did give the Fire Department chiefs the names of the new developers that are coming into town and had told them to set meetings up with them, and if they wanted to pursue that, they can do that as a district. They're allowed to ask them for donations or what have you, but the Town of Marlboro cannot. So I know they've had those meetings, and they're looking at them. I did forward the Fire District some information on some grants that have been made available for specifically for fire apparatus. I know they have that information, so I don't know if they looked into that, but part of that was fire trucks and things of that nature, so they can look into those grants, but again, it's all through the Fire District, so they have to, and obviously, we'd love to get a fire ladder truck in here with the new building going on.
Because I came across and find out what one of those things was worth, and I was just like, wow.
Well, yeah, they could be a million to two million dollars for her ladder truck. So we have two departments, but again, and they're two separate districts, so I know at least one of them is really pushing for it, is the Marlboro Fire District right now, so again, I know they've had conversations, I know they talked to the developers, I know they got the information on the grants, and that's where we're at, so. I mean, it would be awesome if you could do like a fire safety fee, like we do, like rec fees when these planners come in and they develop these big projects, but that's not something we're allowed to do, so it's an independent that the districts can ask them themselves, so.
Well, it sounds like the community needs something like that as we're growing, right?
Yeah, of course. I mean, right now, we utilize, Highland has a fire ladder truck, so like if we do need one, we can use theirs. I mean, obviously, if it's ready and they're not using it, but they do have one. Also, a lot of these new developments, too, are also coming up with that, you know, they have the hookup downstairs, and they're being sprinkled, and there's a lot of safety features that go into them to begin with, but yeah, I mean, to have one of those probably is something one of the Fire Districts should have, so we are discussing it, but again, that's the Fire District, so. Anything else from you guys? Dave, you're quiet down there.
I'm good.
All right, you're good. Eddie?
I'm good.
All right.
I know this is a board discussion.
Go ahead.
I have two things real quick.
Sure, come on up.
Looking for permission on one. Young's Field, we have a problem with people parking there overnight. I don't know if anybody noticed, there's a seal coating trailer's been there.
Oh, I was going to send you that tomorrow.
Since Highway redid the parking lot, well, we're in the process of having it removed tonight. They're making contact with the owner. We, actually, Gary posted it on Facebook, and someone told us who owned it, so we were going to their house tonight. I'm not sure if it's been removed yet, but we're working on that. So I wanted to see if we could work with Highway to put up an overnight parking signs? I think that would work. This way, if patrol finds a car there or something at two o'clock in the morning, we can just tell it.
Absolutely. I think, and I, because we talked about this also at the community center, right? Because we had some issues with the same thing going on there, so.
Yeah, I mean, when there's events at the community center, I could see that would be a problem. I mean, if we leave it unsigned, I think people might become in a habit of leaving things. They do it at the church all the time, although the church does allow parking there, but it becomes a problem when the church needs to do work and stuff like that, so they call me and we get it removed. But here seems to be the second time in as many weeks, I think we should address it before it becomes a problem. The second thing, more for budget time and your contacts with the senator and so forth, we're required to have an AED at the town park for camp. We've resolved that issue for this year, but a thought process is the community center should have one posted on the wall permanently, and also, we should buy another one for the park during.
There is one at the park, it's in the top shed by the baseball field.
Yeah, apparently the, apparently the camp people don't know that.
Well, I should make sure that it was returned because we take, you have to take it in for the winter because they can't stay in cold weather, but there is one there.
Okay, I'll let them know that. We made arrangements for them to use one of our three. We'll have two on patrol, one they'll use, it's going to be brought back and forth daily so it doesn't get left out.
That's a good idea, Jerry, because we had this issue last year.
Yeah, and the senator and the assemblymen, those are things they like to buy, and they're, in their, in their world, those are cheap. They're like fifteen-hundred bucks a piece. Again, the only problem, community center won't be a problem, but the park will be. It's temperature sensitive, so you can't leave it there all winter.
Yeah.
You know, and I don't know that it should be accessible to the public because it will disappear.
Yeah.
Very similar to like the one that's upstairs, it's nice, it mounts on the wall, it's got a case, you break the case open, take the, take the machine, and they are probably one of the easiest machines to use. You put the pads on, it tells you what to do.
You've got to make a good point. It's probably, it's probably something that's going to be required when the Board of Health comes down and inspects that, I don't know. I mean, I would think with a public occupancy of how big that is.
It might be.
It's probably going to be something required. So that's a.
But Sherri, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll let the camp know that that's available. I think they need it at location, but they can go to the shed and take it out, I mean.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, but then, we would need to make sure it gets put back because you need it for the sport things, right? Maybe it's just either they use the one we have, but just keep that in mind when you're talking to the senator and the assemblymen, and that's an easy pony up on their side.
Yep.
That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Sherri. All right. Response. Okay, I got one here, addressed to the clerk, Cherabini.
I am respectfully submitting this request on behalf of the Marlboro Milton Lions Club. For the purpose of hosting the Community Youth Fishing Day, we are seeking permission to utilize a portion of Cluett Chance Memorial Park on June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, between hours of nine A.M. and one P.M. The event area would be along the walking path where there is easement on both Long Pond and Round Pond in the vicinity of the upper playground. We are seeking to serve the youth of our community by sponsoring and providing an event filled with fun, guidance, and environmental education. The goal is to have an onsite fishing expert provide successful fishing techniques, information on aquatic ecology, and habitat information of the New York State Freshwater Fishing Rules and Regulations, and the importance of ethics pertaining to the sport of fishing. The program will also emphasize the importance of environmental protection and conservation. There will be no registration or fees associated with this event. Attendees will be encouraged to bring their own rods and tackle, light snacks and soft beverages. Water and juice will be provided to participants free of charge on behalf of the Marlboro Milton Lions Club. The mission of the Lions Club is empower Lions Club volunteers and partners to improve health and well-being, strengthen communities, and support those in need through humanitarian services and grants that.
services and grants that impact lives globally and encourage peace and international understanding. Please show a fear to contact me with any questions," and that's Joseph A. Misselli, and respectfully submitted. And then, we have that scheduled, so I need permission from the Board to allow the Lions Club to have their round pond fishing event on June 29th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. with no charge."
I make the motion to allow the Lions Club to host their youth fishing event at the park at no charge on June 29th.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Hopefully, it don't rain out this year, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I got, "To the Town Board of Marlborough, I am kindly asking permission to waive the fee for the use of the pavilion at Cluett Shans Park for our Girl Scouts' end-of-the-year bridging ceremony and picnic. We are not a non-for-profit organization that gives back to the community at large. We have used our facility in the past and would appreciate your consideration again. We have requested the use of the pavilion, kitchen, and grills on Tuesday, June 25th, 2024 from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Respectfully ask the Board to grant our request sincerely, Jolene Gare, troop leader, and from Hampton Road in Marlborough. So, the Girl Scouts are asking the use of pavilion on June 25th from 5:00 to 8:00 at no charge."
I make the motion to allow the Girl Scouts to use the town park pavilion on June 25th at no charge.
Need a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. All right, and I don't have anybody resigning from the police tonight, so that's good. The dispatchers, which seems like every other week, so that's good. So, this is the time for public comment. Anybody have public comments on anything? Anything?
I have, I have nothing.
I knew it was gonna be you, Mary Beth. Come on up there, Mary Beth.
I'm here. Guess I'm the main speaker here tonight.
See, you should have sat up by the chief tonight. It would have been easier for you.
So, I just wanted to let everybody know that the Milton Library is having their Founder's Day celebration on Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 24th, at 7:00 p.m., and it will be addressing 700 years of farming in our town. And our speakers are going to be Chip Kent, Ben Tripaney, Amy Hepworth, and Steve Clark. So, it starts at 7:00, and we, I think we're gonna tape it and put it on the library's website for those who are unable to attend, but we hope that you all be able to make it.
That's this Wednesday?
Yeah, it'll be this Wednesday at 7:00. It'll be good. So, thank you. That's it?
At the library.
At the library, yep.
You did that under three minutes. You're great. All right, anybody else? No? Okay, we're gonna go into resolutions then. Resolution 45. "Appoint a part-time police dispatcher. Supervisor Corcoran poses the following: Whereas the town of Marlborough Police Department has an open position for a part-time police dispatcher, and whereas there's a recommendation of the Chief of Police and the Police Committee to appoint Carrie Runk as a part-time police dispatcher, be it resolved that Carrie Runk be appointed effective May 1st, 2024." And Carrie worked for us.
Yeah, before.
Prior, so she's coming back, so that's a good thing, so. And moves for its adoption.
Councilman Mullenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sessa?
Yes.
Councilman Kauki?
Yes.
Councilman Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. Resolution 46, to reduce fund balance. So, this is basically the Highway Department's fund balance. We have to, this is in accounting. They have to install some culverts, and these are kind of expensive, so we're using their fund balance to do so, and we have to transfer this money from their fund balance over to a spending side. So, this is what this resolution is about. So, it's not like we're adding any more money. This is in their fund balance. Supervisor Corcoran poses the following: Whereas due to excess of rain, the town of Marlborough has two issues that need to be addressed, and whereas a sinkhole has created at Bingham Road, where a new culvert will need to be installed for the cost of $56,036.87. And whereas the intersection of Bingham and Hampton Hill Drive has an existing culvert that is too small to manage the amount of water and has been causing flooding issues, a new culvert will be needed for the cost of $80,057.64. Be it resolved that the fund balance DA.0915.00 will be reduced approximately by $140,000 for the funding of the above projects, and moves for its adoption.
Councilman Mullenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sessa?
So, Scott, these are two separate issues, both on Bingham Road?
Yep.
Okay.
Very expensive.
Yeah, that's, stinks. Uh, yes.
Councilman Kauki?
Yes.
Councilman Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. Resolution 47, to award to fuel items. Supervisor Corcoran poses the following: Whereas a legal notice appeared in the official newspaper for the town of Marlborough requesting bids for the town's fuel bids, and whereas on April 15th, 2024, all bids were opened and read aloud, now therefore be resolved that the following bids are awarded. Item 2, heating oil, Mizola Oil Service, Inc., minus forty-five cents margin over OPIS oil price daily, formerly Journal of Commerce, Albany reseller, tank car average per week of delivery. Item 6, diesel, ultra-low sulfur, Mizola Oil Service, Inc., forty-five cents margin over OPIS oil price daily, formerly Journal of Commerce, rack average for ULSD out of Albany. Be it further resolved that the following items are to be re-advertised for bid. Item 1, propane. Item number 3, unleaded gasoline, regular, eighty-seven octane. Item 4, unleaded gasoline, mid-grade, eighty-nine octane. Item 5, unleaded gasoline, premium, ninety-three octane. And the reason for those is we did not get bids, so we were putting it back out to bid, and moves for its adoption.
Councilman Mullenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sessa?
Yes.
Councilman Kauki?
Yes.
Councilman Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. Resolution 48, to award Highway items. Supervisor Corcoran poses the following: Whereas a legal notice appeared in the official newspaper of the town of Marlborough requesting bids on materials for the town of Marlborough Highway Department, and whereas on April 15th, 2024, were opened and read aloud, and whereas Superintendent Highway has recommended the following items. Item number 1, washstone and hauling from vendors, Grasco Materials, Inc. Item 4, 21.50 per ton, three-quarter inch stone, 28.95 per ton. Item 2, material hauling, JKN Trucking, Inc., 10-wheel dump truck per hour, $110, tri-axle dump truck per hour, $130, tri-axle dump trailer per hour, $180, quad-axle dump trailer per hour, $180. Item number 3, material hauling excluding asphalt, Grasco Material, Inc., from Callahan E. Kingston, price per ton, $9.58, plus fuel adjustments of 50 cents over $4.00 per gallon. JKN Trucking, Inc., from Peekman Material Catskill, price per ton, $16, plus fuel adjustment of $1.00 over $4.00 a gallon, and moves for its adoption.
Councilman Mullenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sessa?
Yes.
Councilman Kauki?
Yes.
Councilman Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. All right, so now I have the agreement. So, I don't have, do I have the agreement in my notes? I might be able to bring it up. Bear with me.
You do.
I got too many emails.
It was from Tina on the 19th.
I sent it to you guys, right?
Yeah. No, Tina did. It was from her on April 19th.
Yes.
Well, I don't have...
Here, I'm rescending it to you right now.
Send it to me, and I can get it.
It should come on the top. See how long it takes for it to get from here to there?
See how long it takes for it to get to here to there? Which one did you send it to?
Your supervisor. You want it somewhere else?
No, it should be here. I apologize. But I do want to get the guys, their raises, so we'll wait a little bit. They've been doing a lot of work for us. Come on, are you kidding me?
Really?
Anyway, let me...
Okay, sorry.
"It's a memorandum of agreement by and between the town of Marlborough Highway Department and town employees and United Public Service Employment Union. Whereas the collective bargain agreement, CBA, between the employer and the UPS EU expires on December 31st, 2024, and whereas the parties heretofore agree that the current CBA and all terms and conditions of employment set forth thereon shall remain in full force and effect except as hereon modified, and whereas unless otherwise noted, all changes shall be prospective from the ratification of this MOA unless otherwise noted. And now therefore be consideration of the mutual convenience contained herein. The parties hereby stipulate and agree to the following. One, the recissions of the facts and circumstances set forth in all the proceedings whereas clause are expressly incorporated herein and from part of the terms of the memorandum of agreement. The changes are subject to the ratification of the union membership and the Town Board. Three, agreement shall reflect a new date that the parties entered into the agreement. Article 7, Compensation Section A, all employees shall be paid the hourly rate of pay as specified in Schedule A. Compensation annex heretofore and shall be retroactive to the first full pay period of January 2024." It's crazy that this didn't come up already. Uh, A, Section B shall be removed, and subsequent sections shall be re-lettered as appropriate. B, Section E longevity shall be re-lettered as Section D, and new longevity schedule shall be as follows. So, this contract's gonna go from 2024 to 2027. Longevity at five years in 2024 is 575, in 2025 it's 650, at 2026 it's 700, at 2027 it's 750. At 10 years of service in 2024, you would get 1125, in 2025 you would get 1300. Excuse me, that's wrong. It's 1225 in 2024, so make note of that. It's 1225 in 2024. It's 1300 in 2025. It's 1350 in 2026, and 1400 in 2027. Once you serve 11 years for the town of Marlborough, it's $105 every year thereafter for a maximum of $2,500. Article, section, Section 12, Section A, sick leave shall read as the following. Full-time employees shall earn sick leave at a rate of 10 days per year. Accumulated sick leave credits shall be used only for the employer's personal or family illness or doctor's visits. Sick leave will be earned and accumulated while an employee is in pay or status, and this is where it changes. Full-time employees may accumulate up to a maximum of 120 sick-day leave days. Upon ratification of this agreement, an employee who has more than 120 sick leave days accumulated will be entitled to retain those sick days earned over the 120 sick leave days. However, they will not be able to earn additional days until they have less than 120 sick leave days in their sick leave bank." That's a lot of sick days, huh?
Yeah, do they, currently, that's in red, so currently, do they have no cap on there?
Currently, there is no cap.
Oh.
That's why people have this, they have a lot of sick days, because there've been people that've been here for 20-plus years, so, and they don't use sick days. So, but as of this agreement, the cap will be 120 sick days. An employee who retires from the New York State Retirement System and who was employed by the town on March 10th, 2020, and thereafter shall be paid, and this is the change, because before it was for everything, it's now one-half of their accumulated and unused sick leave on a regular payroll basis, i.e. the employer gives the town notice and her retirement date ends their working day when they work, have been scheduled to work, then goes on terminal leave at their regular rate of pay for each day of unused accrued sick leave time until they exhaust their accrued unused sick leave, and all their accrued unused sick leave has been paid out. So, again, before they had that, they would get paid for all of their time. Now, they get paid for one-half of that time. Article 16, Section A, Juneteenth shall be added to the list of observed holidays. Article 24, duration shall reflect the effective date, January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2027. Schedule A, compensation per hour, place the current chart with the following MEOs. In 2024, 27.99 an hour. 2025 is 28.97 an hour. 2026 is 29.98 hour. 2027 is 31.03 an hour. And I wish this would have worked, but I don't have that here, Sherida.
I don't know why.
Which is kind of odd. HMEOs, 2024 is 28.66 an hour. 2025 is 29.66 an hour. 2026 is 30.70 an hour. 2027 is 31.77 an hour. HMO slash mechanic is 2024, 30.71 an hour. 2025 is 31.78 an hour. 2026 is 32.89 an hour. 2027 is 34.04 an hour. Working supervisor informant is 30.34 for 24. 2025 is 31.40. 2026 is 32.50. 2027 is 33.64. Deputy supervisor for 2024 is 31.40. 2025 is 32.50. 2026 is 33.64. 2027 is 34.82. Water waste water maintenance worker is 2024, 23.10. 2025, 23.91. 24.75 for 2026, and in 2027, 25.62. And just for everybody's awareness, that's 3.5% increase per year.
You could have saved yourself a lot of time by saying that.
I could have said that, right? But I'm gonna, I'm gonna be thorough here. I'm gonna be thorough. Everybody wants to know what their guys get paid.